This August 6th, 2025, meeting of the City of Ames Planning and Zoning Commission is called to order. Planning and zoning commission is an independent advisor body of the City of Ames City Council. Planning and zoning commission members are volunteers of the community and not part of the city administration. Planning and zoning commission is supported by staff from the city's planning division. The commission is responsible for recommendations on matters involving subdivisions, annexations, master plans, and major site development plans, amendments to the zoning ordinance, and comprehensive plan amendments. We make our recommendations based on codes, the facts presented, and input from the public. As an advisory commission, we welcome all comments regarding the proposed item. Please direct your input to the commission. If the proceedings become lengthy, we may ask that the comments be focused on new information not previously presented. You may speak only once on an agenda item. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker information card and present it to the recording secretary. We ask that you come to the microphone to speak so that all comments may be recorded. The order of the proceeding for each item on the agenda will be as follows. City staff will present the staff report regarding the agenda item. Commission members will have an opportunity to ask questions of staff. Applicant will be invited to make a statement regarding the request. Commission members will have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. Members of the audience will be invited to come forward to offer comments and questions. Once the public comment period is closed, city staff and the applicant will have an opportunity for concluding remarks. The commission will discuss the application based on all presentations and any comments given, and come to recommendation for city council. The discussion may include further questions of city staff and the applicant for clarification. With that, we will move into the first item on the agenda, which is introduction of commission members.
Cheryl Moss.
Mike Clayton.
Mike Sullivan.
Mike Lipitra.
Matthew Boss.
Okay, and then with that, we'll move to item three on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Then we'll move to item four, which is approval of the minutes of July 16th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes of July 16th, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now we move to public forum, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak about an item that is not on the agenda, feel free to step forward now and speak. Seeing none, we'll close the public forum and move to agenda item six, which is rezone with master plan for 3220 Cameron School Road from agricultural A to suburban residential medium density FSRM and convenience general service CGS.
Okay, thank you very much. So you have before you tonight a request to rezone the property, corner of Cameron School Road and GW Carver from agricultural zoning to CGS, which is convenience, general service, and FSRM, which is floating suburban medium density residential zone. And this also involves a master plan. I'll go over just kind of the quick summation of the property, and then we can get into a few details. So the total area of land encompasses just a little over 21 acres. It is currently undeveloped. It is an outlot of the Bluffs at Dankbar subdivision that was originally started just a couple of years ago. And to the west, you'll see here on the map, is the residential zoning with some platted lots showing up there. There's already homes being built, and there's currently plats under consideration along with some street construction. So there is residential activity in Dankbar already occurring to the west. There's also residential subdivision that's developed over the last several years directly to the south. So to zoom in a little bit more on the areas that are proposed to be rezoned, you can see them here. So the color there to the north, the purple color, that's the proposed commercial area. That's 6.79 acres. And then to the south, the, I guess, the light green color you'd call it, is the proposed FSRM, the suburban medium density. And that is 14.2 acres, 14.23 to be exact. So on the east part of this site here, where I'm moving the mouse, if you can see, that is GW Carver. And then along the north side up here is Cameron School Road. So the request, as I said, does involve a master plan. And I'll get into the details of why here in just a little bit. But with this, we look at the underlying land use, which is currently split, and that actually follows, the boundary of that follows where the proposed rezoning is. So the CGS land to the north currently has a land use designation of neighborhood core. And then the FSRM zoned, proposed zoned land to the south currently has an RN3 designation. So we put those excerpts in your report. We can go over questions, talk about those a little bit more later. But essentially, the neighborhood core supports the CGS zoning, and it envisions more neighborhood contextual, commercial, smaller neighborhood services and commercial services, offices, small shops, convenience stores, and the like. The RN3 would support FSRL or FSRM. And within that FSRM zoning, that can involve, as is proposed, a mix of apartments. It can also involve senior living and memory care, as is also proposed on the piece to the south, the FSRM. So in the background, we do talk about a few different things. Particularly, I want to go over, before we get into more Plan 2040 stuff, the infrastructure considerations. So at the time of annexation, there was a pre-annexation agreement. And in that agreement, there were some overall general design considerations that any future development here in the entire Dankbar subdivision would need to abide by in order to avoid additional improvements and additional costs by the developer or the city. So with regard to infrastructure, one of the main considerations was making sure that the sewer capacity that was available here with any future development was developed within that capacity. So with the proposed mix of uses here that's being considered, the Public Works Department, the city engineer, has taken a look at those proposals and has found that the peak sewer flows would fall within the capacity that the city has to serve. So we're able to serve this with sewer. Another consideration with plating and eventual development of this site is that there are turn lane improvements that will be required there at the intersection of GW Carver and Cameron School Road, just to the north. So as you can see there a little bit more, that's a better overhead right there. There'll be some turn lanes to the south, also going back to the west in conjunction with this. And with future development, you can see these red lines that come through. There will be a street extension going north and south that will abut the site to the west. And then also going through the site there, there'll be a connection east to west from GW Carver. So there will be good connectivity to all of the sites. And also, the existing roads out there will be utilized as well. So those are a couple of the key things that the developer will need to demonstrate and will need to design for as the area develops going forward. We do point out as well, and we listed this in the addendum, so we do have a master plan. We did bullet for you down in the addendum, the items that will be considered in the master plan. So the master plan will be updated with those items on the master plan narrative. Prior to consideration by city council, there will also be a companion zoning agreement for this that will go along with typical of rezoning processes with a master plan. So the considerations in the proposed master plan, the update that will be done, they'll involve things regarding building orientation of the proposed, particularly a proposed future convenience store at the corner here. Also, an interconnectivity design between the commercial lots. And that'll just create some expectations that when we get to site plan consideration have to be met. Also, we'll address access points onto Cameron School Road, landscaping elements for the development as well. And then making sure, and this is already on the master plan, but making sure that we keep the density range for the FSRM zoned area on there and in compliance. Couple other quick comments on infrastructure. The water service here is served by Xenia. So Xenia Roll Water, the developer will need to ensure, of course, with development, that the water flows and water pressures meet the expectations of the city from Xenia. As well as the electric, which is actually served by Midland Power up here. So this is in the Midland Power district. I think your report said consumers. So just let the record show that it's actually Midland Power, so that was a typo. So what I'd like to do then, at this point, is kind of circle back to some discussion we have in the report with some things relating to fire service. And then along with that, Plan 2040. So I'll just kind of cover some things quick, and then I think I'll turn it over to Kelly. He's gonna add some more things to the discussion. But so we have taken a look, obviously, at all the city services as we do. And so we talk about fire service in this particular analysis. That's probably not something that is typical of what the Planning and Zoning Commission would see. But obviously, with a rezoning consideration, we want to bring it forward to you. So we have some discussion about that. And we also do highlight a few things with regard to the need for a future fire station in this area of the city. And so Plan 2040 is a good way to address that, and I can turn that over to Kelly now.
So as Justin said, since we adopted Plan 2040, you probably haven't heard anything about emergency response or anything of that nature with our normal rezonings. So in preparation of Plan 2040, when we evaluated, not even all of you were on the commission, but back at the outset of that process, when we evaluated growth for the city, which was in four different directions, we looked at a lot of different infrastructure and service needs. And one of those was fire response times. So north growth has been stretched as we continued to grow north for quite some time. We reference in the report that council last looked at this issue in any detail in 2012, when the property just to the southeast of here, known as Seining Valley, was looking to annex and be developed in the city. And council looked at the similar issue at that time. We had different policies for response. But council decided to proceed with allowing for that property to be annexed and eventually developed with potentially an assisted living facility, then it happened there, it happened somewhere else. And since then, we've been conscious of that as a community, as we grow, to be aware of our fire facilities. So in the comp plan process, we did identify as the north growth occurs, so that would be development on Hyde. That'd be development of the Dankbar property, which was not in the city at the time that we did that analysis, as well as the Borgmeyer piece, which will be just to the east of here. We identified that as all of that growth happens, it will continue to put, continue the trend of lower response times as a community average. And that that would really lead to eventually the city council needing to add an additional fire station for enhanced protection in North Ames. So with that understanding, city council chose to proceed with our growth planning. So we noted that as a need for infrastructure in the north. We also discussed that as it related to other growth areas in the city. It does not show up in the comp plan as a policy or a trigger that must be met for development. But why you're seeing this now, or hearing about it now, is as we mentioned, eventually, an assisted living facility has to go to the zoning board of adjustment for its own special use permit. And there is a finding about emergency services and the relationship of a use to that. So we did not want to push this issue all the way down the road to months from now, when we're at a site plan review with the zoning board of adjustment. And we wanted to highlight it as an issue as part of zoning. Because zoning is a timing control as much as anything else that it does. So if we, as the city, which ultimately will be the city council's decision, feel that until there's more resources available, the zoning shouldn't proceed, then council should be making that decision. If council and the commissioner are looking at this as, well, it's something that we're doing in sequence consistent with our plan, that's another option that's presented here as the alternative, and it can be approved. And we just want to know that so that when we get to that zoning board of adjustment decision period or point, that we understand what the city's policy and perspective is so that we can represent that appropriately to the zoning board of adjustment. So as we looked at this, you have a lot of information from the fire chief. It is clearly at the periphery of the city, there's no doubt about that. The information says that, yep, it's on the edge. It's consistent with how we've seen the city grow. It is going to likely put some additional strain on resources across the city in terms of average response time. And that's something the city council decide how to situate that future facility. There's options for locating a facility in North Ames. It's not that there's physically, that it's precluded from happening. So there are definitely choices to provide that facility to meet fires' needs in the future. And then with that, if any facility was added, we believe our response time department goal would be attained at that point. I mean, there's other growth that's going to happen in other parts of the city. So it's not that one fire station forever solves any and all emergency service needs in the community. But we just know that there is a big demand as we continue to grow up north. So the way this is presented to you tonight, I think you have a couple of different choices in the alternatives. Again, a little bit unique structure here because of this unique issue. Alternative one is to approve as proposed. Alternative two is to recommend approval without the assisted living facility. And then option three is really, it's a unique option to say, we don't, you, as the commission, could say, well, we were going to make a recommendation about the land use this year. But since you are not responsible for the decision of staffing and services in the community, you're really saying, we support the land use, but that service issue is really a city council issue. And you're not making a particular recommendation about the service level in response to this property. So that's kind of a different take. You don't normally see that because usually, a facility has to exist or doesn't have to exist. It's not a discretionary choice on how staffing and services work, right? If a water line needs to exist, it needs to exist. You can't have a part of a water line. This is a lot different. You're talking about a service of personnel and equipment. So I think that summarizes how this relates back to our comp plan. The rezoning, again, it's a use control, it's a land use control, it's a timing control. It's, we're looking for a recommendation for even you on how to deal with this at this point. And if you have questions about the chief's comments, we're happy to respond. We've had extensive conversations in-house about this, or willing and able to address that if you have questions.
So I know in here it says, "Construction of a fire station is estimated to be approximately four years away at this time." Is that a pretty strong estimate, or does that have a pretty wide confidence interval?
Yes. It's not in the CIP, so there's, so our CIP, which is our capital improvements program, is updated every year and adds a new year to year five. It is not in the current five-year plan. So I think in the sense that four years away would essentially be the, probably the earliest that resources could be assigned for this project and then placed into the CIP to ensure that it's constructed in roughly that timeline. Like if we said today we wanted to build it, it could not be in place and operational next year. So there's not just a budgetary element to it. There is a timing of making sure the resources are available and how that all gets programmed out and built. So I think we were saying conservatively, if council said now, it's probably four years. Thank you.
So is there a traffic signal planned for George Washington Carver and Cameron School Road? It mentions a cost share.
So when the pre-annexation agreement was approved, along with the subdivision and rezoning for the bluffs overall, the traffic study looked at needed improvements. The developer is responsible for certain frontage improvements. And then they made a contribution towards a future signal at Cameron and GW Carver. The remaining funding of that would be either obtained through the Borgmeyer development or through city contributions towards completing a signal in the future. But that timing of that signal is at the discretion of the city for it to be constructed. And it will not be constructed until Sang Road makes a four-legged intersection there. At least, that's the understanding.
Thanks.
Is it ever discussed that we change kind of the system of emergency response? I think a lot of these calls might be not fire-related. They might be other things that if we change the system a little bit, that they could be met in a different way. Particularly for this kind of a community with long-term care, memory care, independent living, this kind of thing, that always calling the fire department might not be necessary if we change the system? Has that ever been discussed? How much of it is actually the fire response? Like, how much of it is?
Fire department does it?
This is our response system. And so is there any way to change the system to where it's a little more streamlined?
So that would really be beyond your purview of the commission. So the fire department does not believe their mission is to respond to fires. They are first responders to incidents and needs in the community, which is a high-volume call for medical calls. That is the system that is of the city. So even if you took fires' responsibility for medical calls away, the need and the demand still exists. So it's not about fire responding literally to a fire. It's that first responder call for medical or fire assists. And that target is for all types of calls, not just for a fire response. The medical response is actually what drives that more than the fire response. Being able to respond in a certain amount of time increases the likelihood of a successful service to help someone that's in need for medical care. But the issue of redoing how we staff or structure our first responder needs in the community, that's not really on the table for this.
So I just want to say, I really appreciate the way this is laid out and with the three different, the different alternatives, and kind of broken down in the first one through three. Is it city staff's opinion then that the, I mean, the zoning should, the rezone should go forward regardless of the approved use for the, related to the, related to assisted living, the proposed use of that parcel?
So I think our comments were, the commission could choose one, two, or three, and there would be valid reasons to pick any of those three things.
Right, which all approve.
Two does not approve assisted living. It approves, it approves commercial and residential, and just doesn't allow for assisted living.
Yep.
So generally, yes, development of the site, yes. We believe everything is there to support development consistent with our plans. The emergency response is the one that is uniquely outstanding here.
So if we were to recommend and city council were to approve the rezone, but not the approved use of the site for assisted living, would there be on the table a proposed development of that portion of the site? Or would that then just be rezoned, and then someone else would come in and develop that site in a different way?
Say it one more time, right at the beginning, I lost a little bit of what you're asking.
So this proposal includes the concrete, like the actual use of assisted living for that site. There's a proposed use, there's plans, that's in the works. So if it were, if we approved a rezone, but not the approved use for the site, then there wouldn't be a current development in the pipeline, I guess, towards developing that portion of the site?
I think the owner would have to respond to that and say what or if, what they would substitute.
Okay.
Or if they would delay until there's a service available. I think that one of the owner could respond to that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Would stormwater drain down towards Iowa Creek from this site? I'm just assuming.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other questions for city staff at this time? Okay, well, at this time, we'll invite the applicant to come up and make a statement regarding the request if they wish to do so.
Good evening, commission. My name's Kurt Friedrich with the Friedrich Companies. Thank you for giving up your evening to be here tonight and to hear our request. Also want to thank Kelly and Justin. They've done an excellent job of guiding us to this point tonight and showing us the way forward here for this part of our project. I just would like a couple of minutes here just to share some thoughts and perspectives on where we are and where we hope to go. And I would just lead with saying, I am hopeful that the result tonight would be that you would forward a recommendation of approval of our rezoning request, as well as the assisted living element, onto council for their consideration. So a quick history, I bought this property about 10 years ago and bought it knowing that this was in the way of development, that this is the direction. this was in the way of development, that this is the direction that Ames was, was heading. And not too many years later, we were ready for annexation to begin. So we started that process. And about that time, we were approached by Lutheran Church of Hope. And Lutheran Church of Hope was interested in citing a location for their Ames campus at this 20 acres here that we are discussing this evening. And we thought that that seemed like a great way to enrich this neighborhood and we supported that. And so when we completed the annexation, the actual first, first plat of the Bluffs was to carve out the 20 acres here. And that was sold to LCH. And within about two years, LCH pivoted and determined, and I guess this is sometimes the case, that they will move to different locations within a community. And they felt that, I think, being closer to their student ministry on Lincoln Way was the preferred place to go. So they are now building, as you know, out on West Lincoln Way, west of the Jacks properties. So that's a good thing. But as a part of that, then they came back to us and they said, would you purchase our property back? And while this wasn't exactly what we had expected, as we thought about it, we saw that this would create some, some very nice opportunity, not only for this development, but for the community. Because the underlying land use that is here is for neighborhood commercial and for additional housing, both of which are large priorities for the community. And the amount of neighborhood commercial was to be up to approximately 10 acres. We're identifying approximately six acres here as our neighborhood commercial node and then 14 for the RM. And Commissioner Sullivan, to answer your question, we don't have another project. This is our priority and our desire is to help Dover cite their second Iowa location here. And this is where they want to be. And we're, frankly, they're a class outfit. They've done 50-plus communities. They bring a high caliber of community with them. And we know that that's what they would produce here. So we're excited about what they're potentially bringing to our development and to Ames. So fast forward here to today, the Bluffs is really at the center of most of the new housing activity in Ames. There is no other place in town where you're, where you're seeing more new construction activity. And what's cool is, is there's a real cross-section of different housing types going in. We've got, and I think maybe it's on a different, different picture, Justin, but maybe you can go to that slide that shows the development. There you go. Well, against the tree line there, adjacent to Iowa Creek on Cartier, we have produced 20 some odd lots, all of which are now sold to individuals and families. And homes are starting to pop up. We've got another 35 lots coming in here this year. Well, we should be completing those here by October. We've had a few rain delays. And half of those are pre-sold as well. So there's a lot of energy and interest in home building here in the community. To the north, along Erickson, we have a Damani community that Keith Arneson, one of our partner builders, is constructing. He's doing a great job with a really unique product there. It's economical. It fits lots of different lifestyles. It's very convenient living. Then you see in the middle, we have the FSRM piece where we're anticipating some, some nice townhome development. And then that brings me back to the 20 acres here that is the focus of, of tonight. We really want to keep the energy moving and approving a project like this will help us keep the momentum going. Something else that I think is unique to senior housing development that I'd like to point out and that I have experienced over my 35 years of developing is, is the result of building these senior home communities has the impact of unlocking other housing alternatives around the community. And right now, the, the housing market is a little bit more challenging. You might have heard high prices, low inventories. But I can tell you with the Village Cooperative that was built in Regenberg Park, Vintage Cooperative that was done up at Quarry Estates, Northridge Village that was done in Somerset, and the Green Hills Expansion of the Oaks that was done with each one of those projects, it stimulated a lot of activity in the existing home market, opening up lots of inventory of different styles of homes and prices that really helps the whole housing ecosystem. This project will again help that ecosystem of housing in Ames. We call it CHURN. It's also been my experience that the best neighborhoods, and I touched on this a little bit ago here, the best neighborhoods are those with housing variety and a variety of demographics. The Dover project and the commercial element that we're bringing here, again, brings more diversity and interest and attraction to our neighborhood. I do want to acknowledge the concern that Kelly and Justin had touched on over emergency response times. I will say that we've developed almost all of these subdivisions, Somerset, Northridge, Northridge Heights, the Bluffs, and now going across the street, we've just acquired the Borgmeyer Farm, and that will be the Greenbrier Development. All of these projects and scenic valley are technically outside of the city's prescribed emergency response time goal. I'm not trying to diminish or dismiss the importance of fire response. It is important to both the city and to us. In fact, we have already started engaging with the city as a part of our planning for the Greenbrier Project, the Borgmeyer Farm, a sighting of a potential firehouse location in the first edition of the Greenbrier Project. Timing-wise, I think it should fit nicely. Kelly mentioned that there are plans in the CIP, not in the five-year, but it's noted in the CIP. The city knows that we need fire response time to improve in this area and, and are planning to address that. I think that can time out well with the building of this project and when they plan to actually be at fuller occupancies. So I think with that, I know you'd probably rather hear from the applicant, they make, the developer, they actually made their way up here from St. Louis, which I really appreciate. So I'm going to turn it over to our friends from Dover to talk about their project. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks, Kurt. My name's Nick Dwyer with Dover Development. Kelly, do we have that presentation? We've just got a short presentation. We just wanted to run through to give you guys some background on us as a company and kind of what we do. So what you see up here is a rendering of a assisted living and memory care facility, one that we're looking to bring here in Ames. We've built this facility several times over across the Midwest. As Kurt mentioned, we've built over 50 of these and still manage those properties across the Midwest. And we're currently working on a project in North Liberty that'll break ground later this year. And we'd like to make Ames the second place that we're going to build in Iowa. We obviously follow the demographics and we think there's a real need here for additional quality senior housing. And as Kurt mentioned, we think it'll free up housing stock for young families, too. I know there's some concern that we've talked about tonight with EMS and fire response. You know, we're really, we don't see ourselves as an added burden on fire and EMS. We're really just consolidating folks who would be isolated in their homes and placing them in a, you know, brand-new, nice residential facility that's got 50-plus trained medical staff on site that is prepared to take care of those folks and mitigate a lot of those calls, we think. So Kelly, if you want to hit the next slide. So as I mentioned, we're based in St. Louis. We have, you know, built and managed over 56 of these types of properties across the Midwest and Southeast. Second Plan Project in Iowa, we're really hoping it can be here in Ames. We're vertically integrated, so we do everything in-house. Pat and, Pat and I are on the development team. We've got construction in-house that'll come in and hire local subcontractors. And then we manage and fund these projects ourselves. So, you know, assuming we can get through the rezoning and entitlement process, we're hoping to be here and break the ground next year. And like I mentioned, part of the reason we're here is the demand. We follow the demographics pretty closely in our business. And some of these, you know, data points up here, 75-plus population's going to grow over 20% here in Ames. The average year build of some of the older facilities is 2008. This, this facility won't open for a couple of years. So we'll be the newest facility built in over 20 years when you look at the averages. And then we run plenty of market studies and demand analysis. Some of those figures up there, just in terms of the number of units required to keep up with, with the pace of the, of the aging population. You can hit the next one. Some quick bullet points on the project, 87 units of assisted living and memory care. We hope to come back and do a phase two on the 12 acres and add some additional independent living cottages. It's about a $31 million investment. And we'll provide 50-plus quality jobs with over $2 million in payroll. So that's everybody from the people that manage the building, the caretakers, dining staff, nurses, et cetera. So it's a pretty big operation. And then just in terms of the construction value alone, north of $16 million. It'll probably be larger than that. Kurt kind of hit on the schedule. So assuming we're able to get through the entitlement process, we probably won't break ground until the, when the weather warms in the spring. And then it's typically 18 to 20 months for us to complete one of these facilities. And then we typically budget another 18 months to fully stabilize and have full occupancy. So I know there's concern now with where the current fire stations are located in relation to our site, but this project won't really be fully operational and fully occupied until, you know, three plus, four plus years from now. These are some of the pictures of facilities we've recently opened in other areas of the country. Just to give you an idea of the quality, you know, we've got, they're fully amenitized, movie theater, multiple restaurant-style dining spaces, activity areas, studio, majority one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. And then, as I mentioned, 50-plus full-time employees to provide all the services, activities, dining, and everything, and keeping these folks engaged and hopefully prolonging their lives as they age in these facilities. You guys are familiar with the location. But this really is where we want to be in town. We've spent a lot of time scoping out multiple properties and different sites. And it's obviously a challenge when you're going into a town where the university obviously owns a lot of ground. So we've struck out on a lot of parcels that we, you know, saw on a map and liked. But we like to be in the path of growth and where the new residential's going. We like to make it convenient for, you know, adult children who are placing their parents in these facilities to make it convenient to them so that they can go visit mom and dad. And we want to be in, you know, in that part of town that's growing. So hit on the fire safety a little bit more. We think it's, you know, about a seven-minute plus drive, which I know is at the higher end or over the cusp of what the city policy desires. But we personally don't see it as an issue managing over 50 of these across the country. You know, about a quarter or more of our portfolio is higher at that same level or higher in terms of travel distance. You know, just given the fact that we've got all the staff and trained personnel on site, we really don't see as an issue. We spoke with Dieter Fritten at Mary Gurley Medical Center quite a bit in depth, as well as Rich Higgins. And we've had great conversations with Rich, but he did not see it as an issue. He welcomed the thought of a new facility in town. Like I said, we think it really, it's not an added burden. It more of just consolidates and puts everything in one place to where folks are getting better care. They're not at home by themselves relying on EMS for maybe, you know, small item that we can mitigate and a call doesn't even happen because we've got folks watching, keeping supervision on, you know, mom and dad and grandpa and grandma in one of our buildings. So we really feel they're, they're safer in our, in our facility than they would be at home by themselves. Just summarize it up. You know, we talked about schedule. Want to hit that home. This really won't be fully operational for three, four-plus years. The demographics are there. They're very telling. We even pulled this chart from the Story County Housing Study that's published online, just to show you the, the severe increase in the aging population here in this area. And we would love to, you know, come to Ames and be an asset to the community and provide those services and that quality housing that we think the seniors should really deserve. So happy to answer any questions if you guys have them, but appreciate your time.
Does any, any questions for the applicant?
This is a little unusual, but can I ask Mr. Dwyer to come back? I think on the master plan updates from the last week, I don't know that we captured the independent senior living units that we saw during the preliminary review. Could you just tell us like maybe what the range of, of what those are in addition to the assisted living and the memory care units?
Yep. So what we're, what we'd like to do as part of phase one, if we get approval, if we build the 87-unit assisted living and memory care, that rendering you saw on the first slide, what we plan to do if that project is successful and we feel there's a need, which we think there is, what we've done on other projects across the country is come back and build either duplex or fourplex cottages for folks who may not be ready for that full, fully amenitized and fully serviced level of care in the main facility. But they may want to be on campus and engage in some of the activities or the dining, or just kind of the social aspect, or folks who are a little bit resistant. And that's a good way for them to kind of, you know, dip their toes into what it could be like living in a senior living community and see a lot of those benefits. So we've got, I think, maybe 20 that we could potentially build on our 12-acre property that we're planning to purchase from Luke and Kurt. So hopefully that would come along maybe later when the first phase fully stabilizes and that could open, you know, 2030, 2031, something like that.
Thanks. I don't think we had that detail on there for you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none. We'll give members of the audience an opportunity. If anyone would like to come up and offer comments or questions, this is the time to come up and do that. Hearing none. We'll close public comment. And city staff and applicant will have an opportunity for concluding remarks. Any concluding remarks from, I guess, from city staff here?
So I'll just reinforce between now and city council will update, we'll have the developer update the master plan, of course, with those bulleted items we talked about there relating to the commercial design and CGS, also the density and FSRM like we talked about. And then, of course, there'll be a zoning agreement that will go with that to city council to be approved, as is typical with, with master plans.
Thank you. Now we'll open it up, I guess, for the commission. Do you have any discussion on the agenda item?
I have some comments.
Sure, absolutely.
The fire department aspect of it, I want to give a kind of a personal part to that. The fire department aspect of it, I want to give a kind of a personal part to that. Like having put a loved one in hospice recently, one of the selling points of hospice is that you don't have to call emergency services if they fall or if they do this or they do that. The systems are such that they are sometimes unsurmountable. Just to bring Casey's pizza to the courtyard for my husband recently. We have to work it through a system of whether there's going to be staff coverage with these guidelines and everything. And I've also, as a retired special ed teacher, I can remember a time in a different township that my student was locked in a car, severely disabled student. And so the fire department was called, which they know what they're doing. They have a good plan for that. But the process of getting them from there in the time before they could arrive, I called the off, from the office and called a mechanic. And the mechanic came and opened the car door and we had the kid out of the car before the fire department could come. That was within walking distance. These systems break down at times. And for me to be making decisions based on whether to put someone in hospice care based on whether we have to call emergency services when he makes a fall or not, this doesn't make sense. And I think the idea that this will not, roughly the time that the next fire station will come into being is roughly the time this will be up in operations will help with this issue. But also, even though it isn't within my domain, I think, and I feel like people that work for the emergency services might have an opinion on this, too, that some of our systems need to be reexamined to make them more streamlined and make them more workable and actually helping people instead of holding them back. And so I am going to support option one on this.
I mean, I'll say, I just reading through the packet initially, I had concerns about certainly the emergency response. But I think I agree that sort of seeing the timeline of the facility and hopefully a new fire station on the north side. I think that makes me a lot more comfortable with option one.
Just want to be clear, we didn't say there was a station that would be built in year four, right?
Yes, I know.
Yes. Just heard two comments maybe think that you were relying on that that would occur. So I just want to be clear, that's not programmed.
But I do think that, you know, we have to go on predicting.
Yeah, again, you have an option between one, two, and three. You do not have to rely on whether a station is built or not. I just want to make sure that that's what you're thinking and that is not what the staff report said.
Yes. I would say it is my personal opinion that I think as we have more growth on the north side, I think it would be prudent to work on a fire station up there. And I hope that process continues.
So one concern I have, I guess I just, you know, I know that that's the direction that generally I think for the locating of a fourth fire station up there, that seems like that's going to happen. But until something's in the CIP and until it's in year one of the CIP is not necessarily a sure thing. And so I guess that's one concern I have is before, is I'm in favor of the rezone and one of the options, one through three here. But I guess my concern is approving assisted living for use at that site without some sort of approval in place that, yes, there is going to be a fire station on that side of town. I know there's discussion about it. I know that's, it sounds like that's the way it's going to go. But I think it might be premature to approve that use without some sort of commitment in the CIP to locating one on that side of town. So I guess that's my concern. I was encouraged by the, it sounds like the timeline probably lines up pretty well with that, with kind of the four years out, a little less than four years out for being operational and fully leased. And that probably lines up with the timeline for the fire station at the earliest it could be. I do have concerns, though, about ultimately that not even being in the CIP at this time and us approving this as a use for that. So, I mean, I'm kind of leaning towards alternate two, honestly. I mean, I think it's a good use of that. I would like to see an assisted living there. I think that's great, that sounds like a great development opportunity. I just concerned, I'm concerned about going a little bit too early on this when we don't have that even committed in the CIP at this point.
I'm concerned about, you know, as a consumer of assisted living, I'm concerned about losing the opportunity for that land being used for that because land is valuable in this area, in this university village. And, you know, we've heard about church being moved to a different spot and that did work and this worked and that worked. But some things are squeezed out. And if we don't allow for some of these considerations, I mean, the response time for fire department, when it's really not about, oh, we're worried about this assisted living facility getting the help they need at this time, but taking away from other people's needs. And that concerns me that we're not addressing the real population of Iowa and our community, which is in part an aging community. And to lose out on a chance, I mean, you know, once again, getting personal, having had to find an assisted living facility while my husband was in the hospital in a week's time, you know, and there being just very limited options. And it's not that I've researched this facility. I don't know if, you know, other than what I've heard tonight, I don't know the quality of it. I don't know whether that would be appropriate for a loved one or not. But I do know that there are very limited options out there. And this is even for wealthy. You know, I've talked to wealthy people that have tried to find a place for their loved ones and those options aren't always out there, even for them. And it's not that I'm for the wealthy or anything like that. It's just that that is an indicator of how much a need there is and how hard it is to find these kind of opportunities. And to put a roadblock in that is just, I'm not comfortable with it.
I really appreciate your comments. I mean, I've had grandparents that were in memory care units as well, passed away in memory care units. I feel very strongly about that we need more care in that as well. I guess the fire chief's comments really concern me. I guess that's what driving my thoughts on this matter. You know, 10% of the department's total call volume, 20% of medical assistance incidents, and 30% requiring emergent response for assisted living. I mean, that concerns me that not only are we moving, locating this at a location where it's well outside the desired response rate, but that that's going to be a facility that gets an overwhelmingly high amount of the calls that will be outside that. That does concern me for the people that will occupy that space and for their medical care in addition to weighing the both sides of it, I guess, is, you know, providing that location for that assisted living, memory care. But then also it's in a place where they may not get the medical care, the emergent medical care that they need when they need it. So that's what weighing on my mind, I guess, with this decision.
We do have a rapidly aging population. And I think we need to get facilities like this online. If we wait till conditions are perfect, very few of them will be built.
I I know that this may be inappropriate, but part of this, and having just lost a neighbor this week, part of these calls are to declare people dead. And that's where I come into the, can we have a different system in place, which is not in our domain to do. But to build, to make decisions based on that, that declaring people dead or dying is taking away from our emergency response for people that have a chance at living, does not make sense to me. And I know that there are some, you know, cases where it is life-saving support systems that go into these assisted living facilities. It's just, man, having to make decisions based on, you know, going into hospice and having to make a decision, oh, well, at least we wouldn't have to call emergency services if he stumbled in the hallway. I mean, it, that's, I think, where it breaks down. And that we can't do anything about it is, doesn't mean we can't mention it. It's just, you know, to get a, make sure 12 people respond to an emergency when, you know, you could have called the mechanic and had the door open, you know? It's just, there's some inefficiencies there that we probably do need that extra station. But we probably also, as a community, need to address some of these other inefficiencies and come up with tweaking systems to make them work better.
I was wondering if, could either of you expand a little bit on the capital improvement plan and just what exactly that process looks like for, you know, if that was something that city council moved forward with putting in a fire station? And what's that process like?
Yeah, so it's part of our overall budget process, which kicks off in October. So we're almost there. So there's a public comment period that starts in October. For anybody that has a concern or issue that they think should be addressed within the budget, whether it's a service, a facility, whatever that is, city council in December first starts looking at like preliminary estimates for different ideas of what the budget might be. It's not completed yet by staff. But then in January, there's a CIP presentation by city staff of proposed projects and facilities that are needed. At that point, council asks questions, gives some direction about what they're interested in. And then in February is when there's actual hearings on the budget, which is what leads to what levy rate's going to actually be approved by the city council to fund the projects. Now, the levy rate is funding the next year's projects. It's not funding year five projects, at least for something like this. So the fire station comes out of the general fund. All funds would be out of the general fund or out of debt service. So there's no, there's no utility or rate payer tax fee like in a water sewer, CIP. The rate payer's paying for that, your property taxes are not paying for that. So the facilities like fire, police, parks and rec, planning, city hall, those types of things are all coming out of general fund levy, which is your property taxes. So at that point, city council is saying this is what we're going to approve for the next year. And then I said, year five is always the new projects. They can shift within the five years if council wants to do that. It's really hard to move from five to one. It's possible to move from four to three or five to three. It's really hard to move into year one or year two because generally you started working towards those projects. So you won't, so let's say the rezoning app goes to, it's going to go to council at the end of this month. A decision on a fire station and what that means fiscally or financially to the city would not be discussed until January, February of 2026. Does that give you a pretty good overview at all?
That was perfect. Thank you.
Couple thoughts. I'm not sure if I'm misreading it, but I find the fire chief's statement to be a little confusing. 10% of overall calls, 20% of medical assists with 30% requiring emergent response. Does that mean that only 30% of the 20% requires emergent response? Because then that's really only 6% of total calls. I don't know how we get from 10 to 20 to 30. It seems confusing. I'm not sure what he intended to say there. But if 30% of the calls are emergent, and that's a small number. The second thought is, I think it's unusual to have, you know, a great location, a project that's financed, and someone who's already committed to Iowa communities, ready to go. And I think we should be forward-thinking and hopeful that the station will end up in the CIP as part of approving this project. Because it's, it sounds like it's ready to get started, but still three years away. And lastly, just a personal experience, and I don't think the applicant touched on this, but maybe you can. Had a family member recently admitted to a facility like this for a pretty time. And I was not in Iowa, but I was really impressed with the ratio of medical professionals, whether they were CNAs or RNs, to residents and how much attention they received, actually so much that sometimes it's hard to sleep. So I feel like, based on that experience, if it's a similar ratio, that the applicant or their operation is in a good place to mitigate many situations. And I think we should approve option one.
Taking things that's been discussed tonight into consideration, I agree, I feel confident that the city, you know, they're obviously taking a look at the new fire station in the north part of the city. It may not take place right when it would be ideal. But I think it would be on its way. And I can't, I don't think we should be keeping developments like this from taking place for this, basically this reason. And for that reason, I'll support alternative one.
So I can just, I don't know, did you ask me a question about the fire chiefs? Or you're just commenting on their?
If you have, if you can clarify.
I can give a little bit of context. After I read it, after what you said, I think we've missed. I think we've had a lot of conversation, you probably should just put the call numbers in. So there's about 3,000 medical calls a year. There's a couple dozen assisted facility, assisted livings that are coded into the system. They're not all like Dover's. There's just anything that has some kind of element of care and staffing at it. So it's a variety of nursing homes and assisted living facilities. But there's a couple dozen in the city. So there's a couple dozen facilities that are 20, so there are a couple dozen or 20% of 3,000 calls. That's where, that's kind of to give you a sense of magnitude of what we're talking about. And I agree that the 30% of the emergent, I'm not sure if the 30 is of the 20 or 30 of a different number.
Right.
Give you a sense of what we're talking about is it is a very concentrated demand across the city for medical response. But it's out of 3,000 calls in the city for a couple dozen. There's, yeah, 20% are medical from those uses. And that, those numbers are out of the fire department's budget presentation last February. So this, if you're wondering where this information is, you can always get that in the budget presentations for the department.
in the budget presentations for the department.
Do we have any other discussion or comments?
Can you move?
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve alternative one. The planning and zoning commission will recommend that the city council approve the master plan for rezoning the property of 3220 Cameron School Road from A agriculture to CGS convenience, general service and FSRM suburban medium density residential zone with an updated master plan and zoning agreement prior to consideration of rezoning.
Second.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
All opposed, name? Motion passes. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Yep. As I said, this will move on to city council. It should be on the August 20th agenda.
All right. Thank you. And then we'll move, I guess we're done with agenda six and we'll move on to seven. Commission comments, would anyone have, have any commission comments?
My son is visiting from Washington DC and he says we need softer storefronts on Main Street. Just saying, as in more awnings, less harshness, more welcoming. Just wanted to put that out there because, you know, he's my son.
Any comments? Any staff comments?
I do not have any.
No staff comments, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Adjourned.